What day, what date or what days? Sunday to Wednesday?
You just aren't gonna hear it in the room. And so, he's speaking, it's, it's on. Yeah, but like, it's gonna feel weird because it's like, you're not gonna hear yourself, but they can hear you, so like, just keep doing it. You'll be yelling at everyone, and everyone hears it and be like, geez.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, let's be honest.
I could see him calling you up. Yeah.
Yeah, I sent that. That was my, uh, whole fast portion, I still get that. I had to, I couldn't tell on the bird, I put a bird make ground list.
Nail high in the back. Brent, just some up here. I let them know.
Alright, it is six P M. We will call the Sartell City Council Meeting to Order.
Nobody can hear you.
No. There we go. It is six P M., we do have some microphone, uh, issues. Uh, we'll call the Sartell City Council Meeting to Order. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Council, next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I'll take a motion.
Make motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Approval of minutes, we have September twenty-second regular council meeting and Septem- uh, September twenty-second special meeting. I'll take a motion on those.
Make motion for approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We have special presentation tonight, law enforcement swearing in. Hand it over to Chief Sealyard. Again, our microphones in the room are not working, but it is working online apparently.
Uh, thank you friends and family of Kyle and Brittany. I, I didn't know, I have so many friends, uh, this is amazing. Uh, why don't you guys come up for us? Uh, so I have again the privilege for a few times in my career as Sartell to swear in two of our new officers. There. Nice photos of each of you. So, Brittany, Brittany and Kyle joined us actually over a year ago now. They were our first two I C P U A T, uh, police cadets. For us, that was a new program that we had started, uh, with the state of Minnesota. They were hired on as non-traditional law enforcement candidates. And hired on as a cadet, they attended school for five months. Uh, well-being employees of the city of Sartell, they successfully completed that program, which is much like, uh, extended law enforcement academy. And then went on to field training and now, now have been off-field training on their own, uh, working in the streets of Sartell. So for those of you in the audience or online, this, uh, might be a little bit of a surprise that you've seen them in squad cars already, but we often wait to swear our officers in until they've completed the whole program. So, proud of both of them for completing that program, um, and being members of Sart- Sartell Police Department. For family members in the audience, this is always an important moment for me, uh, to share that we will take care of them while they're here. This is a career that is unlike any and they will go through changes, they will go through heartache and trauma, uh, but they will have great successes and, uh, moments along the way for you to celebrate with them as well. Through all of that, the ups and the downs and the hard and the easy, we, uh, are here with them. That is my commitment both as their chief, uh, and our agency to be alongside them while they go through all of those challenging moments, victories, successes alike, we will be there for them. So, without further ado, uh, Erin, Kyle's wife, is here to pin his badge on. Erin, could you come up? And to pin Brittany's badge on is Chief Deputy Kent Bowen.
Correct.
Uh, the Kent Oysher's office. If you guys just wanna stand alongside of him for a minute? And then I did wanna make, uh, this notation that Officer Brittany Kathleen had a, uh, a particular type on with Chief Deputy, uh, here from her childhood and just really, really cool to see this come full circle, I think, for her, but also for me to see that, um, someone in a law enforcement position has such an effect on lives sometimes and can have a positive meaning to them that come full circle. You're hearing how many of them have, so thank you. Both of you raise your right hand. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. The state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
And the ordinance of the city of Sartell.
And the ordinance of the city of Sartell.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
For the city of Sartell.
For the city of Sartell.
To the best of my judgment and. And you have a safe, uh, two more photos, uh, council photos and, uh, after that, public safety personnel. Thank you.
Alright, Council, next on our agenda is the leakage. We have a vacation of one zero zero nine Providence Lane.
Alright, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a vacation request at one zero zero nine Providence Lane. This is in conjunction with a lot combination, Rob, if you could just zoom in a little bit there to see, um, the property we're looking at. Thank you. Um, so both properties there are owned by one person. Right now, they're in the middle of, um, combining that lot, which was done administratively, and then they are doing a house addition remodel with a breezeway garage and sport court. This is the final step in the process, um, to make that whole project a reality. Rob, if you go to the next page, you can actually see what portion of the drainage and utility easement we are proposing to vacate. It's just our standard six feet on each side of, uh, the property lines, but since it's been combined, it's, that's no longer needed. We are still retaining the easement, the drainage and utility easement to the east and the other lot lines, um, as we require by ordinance. Um, as I said, part of this project is a house addition, um, with a sport court and April asked the appropriate question, is the sport court going to match the primary, um, design and structure of the residence? And yes, it'll match, um, from an aesthetic point, it will match. Um, we've had that in the past come up, where it hasn't matched, but this is proposed to meet all of our other, um, zoning requirements. So with that, I would take any questions you may have. Otherwise, open the public hearing, um, for this specific vacation and then my ask is to make a motion to approve and second the vacation.
Great, thank you. Council, any questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the vacation of one zero zero nine Providence Lane? Please step to the podium. Second call, anyone wishing to testify? Seeing none, third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the vacation of the drainage and utility easement at one zero zero nine Providence Lane? We will close the public hearing. Council, any questions after that? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the vacation.
With a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto our next public hearing is the final session, assessment hearing for the Westside Reconstruct Project.
Alright, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight, we have the twenty twenty-five Westside Reconstruction Improvement Project Final Assessment Hearing. I know you've seen this image for the past couple of years, but just wanted to do a, a refresher that the Westside Project is a major reconstruction effort going on in the city. Um, throughout the summer, there are four primary project areas. You can see on the right side of your screen there, from the Riverside over to Fifth Avenue is what we've been considering project areas A and B. On the upper left side of the screen, Terry Lane, First Street North and Seventh Avenue has been referred to as Area C, and then Sartell Street and Fourth Avenue on the bottom left is Area D. Uh, the area shown in that pinkish-red are complete reconstruct, so sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer, full curb and gutter, um, street, and then pedestrian improvements. That partial reconstruct, shown in blue, are some of the utilities were replaced in those sections, um, as well as some of the curb and gutter and then full street. And then the green is showing, um, the mill and overlay sections. With the project, there are a hundred and eighty, uh, properties proposed to be assessed. Hundred seventy-three of those properties are single-family residential and the remaining seven, commercial. Uh, the total assessment amount from those hundred and eighty properties would be two million nineteen thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. The total estimated project cost is just over fourteen point four million. Uh, we are recommending the maximum of eight thousand dollars or eight percent estimated market value, whichever is last to those single-family residential properties. This is in line with recent street and utility reconstruction projects such as the East Side Project, Safe Routes, and then County Road One. The assessment payments would be payable over fifteen years at a five per, five percent interest rate. This map just highlights those hundred and eighty properties, so you can see the single-family residential shown in that dark blue. Um, the one city-owned property that's along the project is the Watatab Park shown in the light blue. Seven commercial properties are shown in that green, um, and then properties that were previously assessed with the twenty twenty-two County Road One project are shown in orange there. I'll talk about those in just a minute. Um, and same thing with the twenty nineteen Safe Routes to School properties, uh, shown in red. Guidance from the preliminary assessment hearing is that properties with multiple assessments from recent projects, um, would be assessed as follows. So again, orange is everything from County Road One, so that those properties all hit that eight thousand dollar assessment cap in twenty twenty-two and therefore are not being assessed with this project. Uh, the properties in red were the twenty nineteen Safe Routes to School project properties. Multiple of those properties hit that eight thousand dollar cap with that project and are not being assessed with this. And then there were two properties that didn't hit the cap in that twenty nineteen project and they're being assessed the remaining amount to bring it up to that eight thousand. The majority of the project is, will or will be substantially complete this fall, twenty twenty-five. Project Area C, which again is Terry Lane and First Street North, was originally planned to be substantially completed in twenty twenty-five. Uh, due to the spring rain, spring and summer rain impacting construction schedule, it was decided mid-season, uh, to split this area into two phases. That's kind of the area shown in red in the, the, um, screen here is all Area C and then red is that second phase, which will be now constructed in the spring of twenty-six. The assessment amounts are not impacted by this change in construction year, uh, as these properties have been included in this assessment role. Wanted to highlight just a couple of quick changes, um, from the preliminary assessment worksheet to the final assessment worksheet. First being seven oh six Terry Lane. Um, at the time of the preliminary assessment, this was township property. It has si- since been flatted and annexed into the city, and so you'll see on the right side of the screen there, um, that parcel one seventy-six or the map ID one seventy-six, one seventy-six A reflects that it's no longer a deferred assessment, um, and reflects the split with the plat. Also at eight forty-four First Street North, um, there was an updated right-of-way for the new road alignment and cul-de-sac in this area. That's a change from, um, the preliminary assessment and so that one sixty-one A on the right side of the screen reflects that, um, combination of those lots now. One other change from the preliminary assessment is on the Second Street North sidewalk, the south side of that sidewalk was considered a local pedestrian route within the preliminary assessment, um, and was therefore assessed to those adjacent properties. Uh, staff recommended modifying that to a regional classification based on the proximity to regional sidewalks nearby and the regional significance with schools and commercial properties. Um, and up note, regional sidewalks are not assess- assessed under the city's assessment policy. Um, so then this sidewalk is no longer within the assessment calculations for the final assessment. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, um, prior to opening the public hearing. Otherwise, I'd ask we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Hunter. Council, what questions do you have? Any questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the final assessment for the Westside Reconstruct Project? Please step to the podium. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody, I'm Larry Landrum of Lebon's here. Uh, I live on Sartell Street West, uh, and where Sartell Street comes from the River Road and then turns on to Fourth Avenue. The Sartell Street also goes straight ahead down the hill to my house. My house is right in line with Sartell Street. This has been going on for six months, but that's beside, anyway. Uh, the curb that we got, or that is up on Sartell Street, uh, I get no curb coming down to my house, so that's two hundred feet away. The closest storm sewer is five hundred feet away. It's down the road even farther towards Riverside. Uh, we, uh, don't need, and there won't be any turf restoration, there's, there's no lights within two hundred feet of our driveway. Uh, there is the trail, a walk-in path or whatever, that's a couple hundred feet from our driveway. No stormwater treatment. So we're kind of on a, and I don't even know if this is gonna turn into like an alley type thing. If it's still gonna be Sartell Street when all this is over, I don't know. But, uh, I've lived there forty-seven years. Uh, there's never been any work done on that part of Sartell Street. And so I was just thinking that it was possible, since we're only getting the driveway, which isn't completed yet, coming down and come right to our, my driveway, that's like about twenty feet wide, maybe. That's how much my property touches any part of Sartell Street. Good enough?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Frank Alwellen. I live on, uh, Sartell Street as well, uh, the same alleyway as Bonnie and Larry. My wife's name's Mary. Um, the other thing I wanted to add is, we also have, um, lift stations where we have to pump up. A lot of people up on the, up the road, there's just gravity feeds, so we have to constantly maintain our pumps. So, we just don't really feel that it's totally fair that it's, we get the full assessment. You know, we don't get the curbs and gutters and all that stuff, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
What was your address, sorry?
Pardon me?
What was your address for the record?
Three fifteen Sartell Street.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kathy Wilson and I also live on Sartell Street. I'm, I'm just a little perturbed with this, the bike trail being so close to my house. I picked up information, I'm putting up a fence, and that might not be real easy, considering the measurements and the stipulations that Sartell has. So I'll be spending money on some kind of landscaping to prevent people from walking up to my windows. Um, also on my driveway, as you take a turn, it's shortened. I can't get two vehicles, um, in front of each other in my driveway without the back one going on the bike trail. It's not long enough. So I have to reconstruct and make a bigger driveway, um, also. So I feel like I shouldn't have to pay the full assessment either.
Thank you. What was your address, sorry?
Three eleven West Sartell Street, the White House on the corner.
Yep.
Street with a path going right by the window.
Thank you.
I live at four oh one two and a half Street North in Sartell, and I've been dealing up with this noise. Dust and blocking my exit driveway for the past four and a half months. They seem to be taking their time so they can extend a job and ask for more money. I've also been flooding in my basement. What is the due date when they are supposed to have this job completed?
I don't have an answer for you, but we will get it tonight.
If it's not finished by that date, will they have to pay a fine? Or how much will the fine be? When I came to Sartell seventy-one years ago, there were no streets or avenues like they are today. We had no sitting water. We had no city water. When they started putting in streets, they didn't find anything in their way. Why is it that now the granite is bothering there? The city of Sartell sits on granite. I'm in my nineties, and I've lived here for seventy-one years, and my property is homesteaded. So how do you expect me to pay, make these payments? I, I think we are being overcharged. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Good evening, Mayor Councilman. Uh, my name is Caleb Claus. I live at five zero eight Second Avenue North. Recently bought the house in November of last year as a first-time homeowner. Uh, during the whole buying process, this project was not brought up, uh, whether that be a mistake on whoever I purchased the house from, or, uh, just letters not coming in, and me just not seeing them in time. Um, we have noticed that, or me, I live with two of my friends in this, in that house. Uh, one is a graphic designer who lives in the house, and the uh, ground leveler has kind of disturbed his work throughout the last three and a half months, or so there's some lost wages in there. We did notice that, uh, two big-toothed asp and poplar trees were taken from our, from the front yard to be replaced with, uh, a fire hydrant, so a public utility, which kind of makes it an inconvenience for both parking out front and for having to maintain constant access to that for the city, so it kind of feels a bit of a bad, feels bad moment there for just having to now maintain that and still having to pay the full easement for that, as well as losing out on potentially selling the wood from the poplar trees, which are very popular for both either guitar making or for firewood. Uh, just rough estimates, on the low end is about twenty-five hundred per tree for the size they were, one being a double split of, uh, two twenty-inch diameter trees, and one being a roughly forty-inch diameter tree, going about fifty to sixty feet up in the air above the house. So that mixed with not being able to access my, uh, garage, which is alleyway access only for about three and a half of the last six months during the stormy season, and just potholes everywhere. Actually broke the suspension on one of, uh, the room my housemate's cars, and we had to, so we had to replace the shock due to a full extension to quick reextension back up to full height, ruptured the, uh, shock tower. So, just a couple things throughout the last few months have been a little stressful for, and as a first-time house owner, my parents and never, grandparents haven't seen, they, they live in Foley. They haven't had these kind of easements come in that require payments, so I would have assumed, and they also assumed that these would have been covered via property taxes, as that's, as far as I'm aware, kind of what property taxes are for, is for the uh, maintenance and well-being of the local infrastructure. So, uh, with all these in mind, I do not feel like the full easement is uh, fair to almost every house owner who is affected by this.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tom Ofron. I'm speaking on behalf of Saint Francis Xavier Church and School. We're on the two hundred and three hundred blocks of Second Street North. I hope you received a letter that we had drafted and sent to you a couple weeks ago. Well, and I want to just reiterate, um, the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar assessment that, uh, that we're looking at is, I just see it's almost ten percent of the total assessments being made. So I think that looks a little steep for us. And again, all, not all these people, but many of these people are also people who support our parish and sit in those pews, and they're getting assessed at the same time. So we're just asking if there's a way that you can find some relief for us. We would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Mike Kirby. I'm at five seventeen First Street North. Uh, our property is right at the end of the project. Seventeen years ago, um, we had the whole thing redone in front of us, sidewalk, water main, all that done, except for the sewer. And so, uh, now you're gonna be coming in and doing that. In the process of doing that, you're tearing out everything else. Again, all we're asking, our assessment's eight thousand dollars. All we're asking is just to pay the water and sewer, I'm sorry, just the sewer connection and the sewer service is all we're asking, which is around six thousand dollars. So we're just asking for that change because we had no choice seventeen years ago to make the sewer come in at that point ti- point in time. We're just redoing that again. Why pay for it again? Everything is good. Everything's been, that's gonna have many more years left, life left on it. So whatever planning was done seventeen years ago, I don't think we should pay the penalty for that. So if you could consider that, we'd be greatly appreciated on that. Also, I am a member of Saint Francis Xavier Finance Council, along with Tom, and just speaking on behalf of the church as well, I just gotta say, it really would be a huge hit. That hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is a big number for the church, and we're always on a, we're on a very slim margin as it is, so if you would consider that, we'd greatly appreciate that too. Thank you.
Just real quick, verify your home address is five one seven First Street North?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Sure. Connected to the bridge? Anyone else wishing to testify?
Hi, I'm Doug Tanner. I'm with Messiah Lutheran Church at three twenty Fourth Avenue North. And, uh, I sort of echo, uh, what Saint Francis is saying. In, in our case, um, you know, we've paid for assessments all, pretty much all the way around to our property over the last thirty or thirty-five years. And now the only work that's been do- that touches our property is across the street on the, on the, uh, east end. It's, you know, a hundred feet. Is, is the only construction that affects our property at all. And, uh, you know, we're a small congregation, and, uh, like Saint Francis says, this is a, is a big shot to our budget. It's probably, uh, ten or fifteen percent of our yearly budget. So, if, if anything could be done there, we would, we would really appreciate it. And again, a lot of our members, um, are paying for this project for their, for their own homes also.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the final assessments? Second call, anyone wishing to testify? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the final assessment for the West Side Reconstruct Project? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, we had a number of people, um, ask questions, voice concerns. Hunter, if you can, uh, walk through some of them. I know you were jotting them down as well. Um, I would start, one that I'm able to answer, would be a question about, um, five oh eight Second Avenue North. Question about the assessment, uh, knowledge of it. I would say that the West Side Reconstruct Project, um, has been in the works for over a decade, about a decade, and it has been delayed, uh, numerous times, but has been publicized. Um, proper notification was sent out, and so in that individual instance, I would certainly say that would be, uh, item between you and your realtor, or the previous, um, owners.
Um, I missed right down the first two on Sartell Street. I'll, we'll jump to that. I will say the substantial completion is the first I wrote down, so I'll come back to that in just a second. Substantial completion for this project, um, is this fall with the exception of that one portion of, um, Terry Lane, that second phase there. Um, that'll be substantially completed next fall. Um, I know there was a question on, on the completion, so everything else is wrapping up. Substantial completion means there's still work that will occur next spring on those areas, um, A, B, C, and D. But final paving will be completed, and then, um, they'll come back and put the final lift of pavement on next spring. They'll do cleanup, um, turf restoration, those types of things.
And it's a bid job, so if they delay, they delay, there's no, uh, expense to us?
Correct. Yeah, there's, well, no expense to us. Correct, correct.
Yeah, so just to add on to that, substantial completions this fall for most of it. Final completion for the whole project is July of twenty twenty-six. Um, so there is quite a bit of time yet next spring for turf establishment, that final paving, um, punchless items, other outstanding items that we're gonna watch over the winter. Um, so the complete project won't be wrapped up until summer of twenty twenty-six. The first couple of questions were, uh, for Sartell Street. Um, so Sartell Street takes a sharp ninety-degree turn into Fourth Avenue. At that sharp ninety-degree turn, there is an alley um, that goes substantially down a hill, so there's a decent elevation drop. That alley does not have curb and gutter. Um, a lot of alleys within the city don't have curb and gutter, but the street itself got new curb and gutter. There is new water, uh, main, new sewer main, and new storm sewer, uh, within Sartell Street. Uh, so those two properties with, on that alley are, um, being assessed and treated exactly how the other properties within the project that also have alleys, um, are being treated and assessed. When I say treated, I mean assessed. Um, so those assessments are reflected that way. Um, the question, uh, with Kath- Kathy Wilson on her driveway. The project and that trail are a hundred percent within the city right-of-way. There's four or five feet from where the back of the trail is to the property line. Unfortunately, that house and that property sit very close to the right-of-way line. Um, the driveway length, uh, I think varied within a foot from what, um, existing conditions were, so, um, Sartell Street is being assessed, and that alley are being assessed, uh, consistently with the rest of the project.
Uh, fence, there was some questions about a fence on there. I don't know if that's been discussed, or if we need to see a fence proposal.
Uh, three eleven Sartell Street? For adding fences?
Yeah.
Fences would be, um, through the city's typical permitting process.
So you'd need to submit a fence permit, just like anyone else, and it'd be reviewed based off of setbacks? Okay. While we're on Sartell Street, um, three fifteen Sartell Street spoke about maintaining a pump. First I've heard of that. Is that a individual situation, or?
Yeah, so throughout, um, throughout the city, there are some individual residents that have, that are, their elevation is lower than the sanitary sewer, and so they typically have pumps within their house pumping up within, um, into the city's systems. They have their private service with a pump associated with that on the private side, and it'll pump and dump into the city's main.
And that's a private utility pumping into our sewer system?
Correct.
Within right-of-way?
Right.
I know there's some unique situations like that, not elevation, but, um, within the Blackberry neighborhood as well, just based off of drainage.
Um, I don't, five seventeen, I don't recall the, I'd have to look at that.
Five seventeen was just a sewer connection? Um, sounded like seventeen years ago?
I don't have the list in front of me.
Yeah, um, so five seventeen's assessment, um, does include assessment for street, sanitary, water main, and storm sewer. Um, their assessment amount without the eight thousand dollar cap is calculated to be, um, twenty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-one. They are hitting that eight thousand dollar cap, so their assessment is the eight thousand dollars. You know, if you were to take off the water, sewer, or portions of that assessment, they're still gonna hit that eight thousand dollar threshold, so taking off the chunks that they're recommending, um, that total assessment amount would still be above the, the maximum, so still recommending that maximum assessment of eight thousand dollars for that property.
Um, on the Messiah Lutheran, there are some questions about the, um, assessment, what portions are connected to, um, to the construction and associated. It is the, the southwestern portion of that, of that lot abuts the construction. Um, that is also where the, um, water and sewer service are for that lot, or at least the, the primary ones that they located and connected to with that, and so they do have, um, the utility services as well associated within that corner. So it's a smaller, smaller portion, but it also feeds, um, that lot.
And so any previous assessments would have been surrounding roadways, not water sewer connections?
Yeah, and I don't have, I don't know that we have the record of those previous assessments. Um, they would have been, I don't know the last assessment that would have been there. They have bought Fifth Street, um, and then Third Avenue as well. Um, and I don't know if we have record of the latest assessment on that for what would have been assessed, but, um, but, correct, yeah, the sewer and water is accessed off of this project.
Mayor Fitz, um, of note, the previous project that would have been assessed, that project, um, within, in the city's assessment policy, um, we have a, a useful life, um, standard useful life called out for roadways, sanitary sewer, water main. Um, and so that project would have been far enough in the past that that useful life would have um, already met that assessment policy. Otherwise, it, it would have been pro- prorated within the assessment.
Hunter, we had one at, um, five oh eight spoke about, uh, trees which I'll make the assumption were in the right-of-way, which, uh, a fire agent was added. Maybe you can just speak to the right-of-way and work that gets done in the right-of-way?
Yeah, so throughout the project, and we, we do, um, look at trees even within the right-of-way, and, and you know, try to, try to save what we can. Unfortunately, within the city right-of-way, there are, um, a number of trees with these projects that are, um, taken out, many of them growing very close to the utilities that are being installed. Um, and similar with, with hydrant placing, oftentimes in these old neighborhoods, hydrant spacing is not, um, up to current standards and codes, and so the hydrants do move, and they're not always in the exact position, um, that they were before, and so we, we look at the system as a whole and the nearby hydrants, um, and are placing those throughout the design, and so, um, they are placed within the city right-of-way, um, but those, those will move with these types of projects.
Counsel, do we have any others that we missed? Okay. Um, we had Saint Francis as well, I think, um, do we know of any previous assessments there? Uh, any work been done in that area previously?
I don't know, um, the, what previously would have been assessed. They would have had on the south side, um, there, they had, have alley on the east side, they have a street on the west side, and then streets in north and south. They're fully surrounded there. Um, I believe the two thousand eight project may have hit the south side there. I don't know of the previous assessments. I do know the Saint Francis lot in particular has, um, in addition to these streets, um, the street assessment, it also has three utility connections that come off of Second Street with the project. Um, so they have two different, I'll pull this up quick. Um, they have one smaller service, a one, one one-inch water service, and then two six-inch water services, and then similarly, they have one four-inch sewer service and two six-inch sewer services there, so, um, I, they might have other services throughout as well. I don't know that information, but I do know we replace services with this project that rely and connect to their property.
Uh, Mayor Fitz, um?
Yeah.
I just wanted to add, uh, to that for, uh, our staff did meet with Saint Francis to go over some of the previous projects that did occur there and prorated, uh, taking any of those that were applicable off. And so that, that assessment was adjusted based on those projects already. Um, so the original assessment amount was, at the preliminary assessment hearing was one hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents. With making those adjustments from previous projects, uh, it was adjusted down to one hundred and seventy-five thousand seven ninety-four. So those adjustments, uh, have been accounted for in the final assessment notice that was sent.
Thank you. All right, counsel, um, not seeing any additional questions. Um, we'd be looking for some type of motion on the final assessments. Is there a motion?
I, I would make the motion so we can have further discussion about it.
So, we've got a motion, is there a second to that motion? A motion and a second, um, to approve the assessment roll?
Yes.
Good, uh, discussion.
So, um, Anna, you mentioned some of the previous projects that we've done that may have touched. So, it's, maybe I'm getting confused. Did you say the adjustment was based on previous projects or designating that sidewalk a regional sidewalk?
Speak to that, um, so, let me pull up. On Saint Francis in particular, there were two, two items that changed when we met with them. And so, and I should start by saying, from the preliminary to the final assessments on, on everything, we're going through with our final design and going line by line in every one of them, and checking these, these footages. Um, the street footage, they have an irregular shaped lot, um, based on the assessment policies calculation of regular shape. So, their initial street front footage was seven hundred sixty-one feet. Based on the revised calculation, they're looking at what would benefit to them. It's six hundred thirty-six linear feet, um, instead of that seven hundred sixty-one initially. Um, and then that sidewalk was another change that would have impacted them as well as some of the surrounding properties. So, not necessarily specific to them, but the adjacent properties as well, they were, lowered that down.
Okay, and they, they were impacted by the two thousand eight project, the Brookwood Lane?
I don't know what assess, I, I don't know what assessments.
We were assessed when First Street North was, uh.
Tom, would you mind coming up to the podium?
We were assessed when First Street North was done on our south side, and I believe we also had some assessments on Fourth Avenue. So, we did have some assessments prior, and again, I, I, I just, I guess we're starting to figure out why we're almost ten percent of the whole assessed amount. It just seems extreme and again, if there's any way, there can be some relief fund for that, you know? I mean, again, most of these people sitting here are people sitting in pews too, and they're already getting nicked.
Eight thousand seems extreme too.
We can't, we can't, uh, pass a collection basket three or four times each church session, so, um, I don't know. If there's a way that we can make an adjustment, we're just asking for that.
Thank you. Hunter, could you maybe talk about the assessment, um, math, how that would work, uh, a normal lot versus six hundred and thirty-six?
Yeah, the calculation?
Yeah.
Getting to that, yeah, actually, I pulled up just an extra, I pulled one slide from our preliminary hearing just to help kind of explain the calculations in general, since this might help give an overview. So, basically, each, each lot, whether it's residential or commercial, has a associated front footage. And the assessment policy within the city defines how to calculate that front footage, because not every lot is a nice, perfect rectangular lot, um, abutting of streets. You have corner lots, you have regular lots. Um, the assessment policy breaks down how to get to that front footage, and then that front footage is applied. Um, you multiply that by the assessment rate, um, and the assessment rate is your total cost. For, for example, for street, you have your total street cost on the project. Uh, you're dividing that by the entire length of all the benefiting properties and you get, you know, your rate, um, that's being assessed. And so, you, that's multiplied by that footage, um, whether it's residential or commercial. The commercial lots, you know, often being larger in size, um, have a larger street and larger sanitary sewer. And, you know, if you go down the list, their frontage is larger, and so, it's that same rate that's applied across the board. Um, the biggest difference is that they're, they don't hit that cap in the commercial instead of the single-family residential.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor Fitz, um, the two thousand eight capital improvements project that Sartell completed, um, would have impacted Saint Francis. Uh, that was the reconstruction of First Street North that did not include any utilities. Um, it was a street reconstruction project, um, so it's likely they would have seen, uh, an assessment for that street reconstruct. Uh, this project included the street and utility reconstruction on Second, um, which is all the water and sewer services that Hunter had mentioned for Saint Francis. Prior to that, um, it looks like the Fourth, um, Fourth Avenue project was in the eighties. That would have been on the, the west side of their property.
Pat, any additional questions?
April, you had mentioned one's a useful life for these, what, what, what is the useful life? I mean, th- this should be a, a once every thirty-year process for most homeowners?
For this west side reconstruct project, um, this is the last reconstruct project where we're getting rid of old materials. Clay, sanitary sewer, um, cast iron, water main. Those types of materials, useful life, thirty to forty years. And that's generally what's in the assessment policy. The types of materials we're using now, ductile iron, PVC, uh, tend to last forty to fifty years, longer than that. And even, and some, so, the useful life of the utilities that we replaced here, much shorter, shorter life, um, than what we're installing now.
First Street was already updated materials?
Sir, we gave you an opportunity during the public hearing.
But it's not true.
I'm gonna ask you to be quiet, thank you.
So, I guess, uh, to, to the point, when, when was this last done?
The project as a whole, or are you speaking, or like?
I don't know when, do we have records of when Second Street was done? I don't know when, if we have records of when the utilities would have been done, or there are utility services there. Cause the utility projects you referencing are on different streets than what we're currently assessing as well. It's the, yeah, the two streets, one on the south side and one on the west side. Their assessment for this is only for set, the construction on Second Street North.
Okay, but the, the, the streets where we are assessing for utilities, do we know when those were last done?
The utilities?
Yes.
Um, we know some records, we don't have great records of all the areas because they are so old and they are generally forty-plus years old.
Okay, so I mean, the question, we did get probably more life out of them than we would have expected.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or discussion?
Uh, quick question, so the eight thousand cap on residents, that's pretty typical for the last few projects that we've had throughout the city. I mean, we're, we're, in history of the entire assessment program that we've had in the last couple of years, where are we at with that?
Um, in my tenure with the City of Sartell, which has been since two thousand seventeen, that has been consistent with, um, assessments on projects for single-family residential, eight thousand dollars or eight percent the estimated market value.
That, uh, um, cap of eight percent really came about on the east side reconstruct project.
Correct.
Very similar
Yeah.
to this project, uh, had been delayed for many years. And, um, there was some excessive, um, overall assessments, just like we have here. And so, the council at that time made the decision to cap it at eight thousand. It's held at eight thousand, it has not adjusted with inflation, and I don't recall when the east side project was, it's about ten years ago?
Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Any other que- Pat?
Well, not a question per se, but I think it is worth mentioning and discussing that eight thousand dollar cap, because the assessments, um, everybody might not be able to see what, or, I guess you can't see it up there. I mean, it is, you know, thirty-five percent is what we're charging to the homeowners, correct? Thirty-five percent of the actual cost.
It's broken down by each category throughout our assessment policy, yeah, so you can see the rates.
Most of them are thirty-five?
Thirty-five is kind of the standard, there's a couple that are exceptions to that, um, but yeah, for the most part, it's thirty-five.
Yeah, so I mean, we're starting at thirty-five, and we still end up with a number of twenty-some odd thousand for most of these lots at thirty-five percent, so. Um, the eight thousand dollar cap we did put in place, um, I guess that would be eight years ago. And, I mean, if you count for inflation, that would be even higher. The city hasn't adjusted that. I get that eight thousand dollars is a lot of money, um, but relative to what it could be, um, it's, it, it's trying to put a cap, these is, these projects are expensive, there's no way to pay for them, um, without some contribution from the residents who are benefiting from them. So, this has been a longstanding policy of the city about how we assess these things. And we are trying to be cognizant of your budgets and everything and trying to limit the pain, if you will, from the, from the assessment, so. I just think people need to know that, I mean, we don't take these lightly. This is probably, doing assessments is probably the least fun part of this job. I've been through a few of these on the council, and we don't like to do it, but it's necessary and it's how we can pay for things as a city, so.
Yeah, I think, Pat, you said that really well. You know, as a, as a council, we look to hold our tax rate as low as possible. And, and that's part of that, is these assessments do play into that. There are other communities that, uh, go a different route and have a higher tax rate overall, um, within less on assessments. And so, it, um, it is an evolving topic within other communities. But to Pat's point, not a great opportunity for any of us. It's work that needs to be done, and how do we share that, uh, financial burden? Counsel, any other points of discussion, questions? I'm looking at our list, um, I think we've addressed, um, all that were brought forward. Seeing no additional questions, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the assessment, uh, worksheet, worksheet and the final assessment signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? That carries four zero. Counsel, next we have our consent agenda. Give it just a minute here. All right, counsel, next up is our consent agenda. Uh, we have ten items on there. I will, um, pull five D one and disqualify myself from that due to a, uh, direct interest in that project. Are there any others that would like to be pulled? Seeing none, um, I would look for a motion on the remaining items on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion?
There's a motion to approve all but item D one, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, again, item D one, uh, I'm disqualifying myself due to a direct interest in the project. Counsel, if there's a motion, we'll take it.
I'll make a motion to approve D one.
There's a motion to approve D one, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That, uh, carries three zero, one disqualified. Onto action items, we have a ad hoc committee, uh, property valuations. Anna?
Mayor, members of the council, uh, you saw in my council memo the request for, uh, two council members to serve on an ad hoc committee related to property valuations. Um, just looking into this further as we plan out our ten-year financial management plan, knowing and recognizing the importance of our net tax capacity change as we plan that out, and reviewing our, uh, tax valuations, estimated market value, uh, especially the last two years in particular, uh, and where Sartell has fallen on that specifically in, in Stearns County. Would like to stand up a committee and just make sure that we both understand that process and the data associated with that process, but then also can connect with some of our partners such as the banking industry, real estate brokers, and school district to understand, what is, you know, whether they can affirm the data that we're seeing a- around those valuations and/or what are they experiencing in their particular fields.
Perfect, and counsel, um, coming out of a recent conversation at the dais, um, was, uh, some questions around valuations. Myself and Councilmember Lynch had an opportunity with staff to meet with the county assessor and to begin understanding that. The reason for this ad hoc committee is I think we left there, I personally left there with more questions than I started with. And so, we've, we need to di- dive farther in, um, as council are aware, there's a, um, study going on, a housing study, which I also think will be, uh, needs to be part of this, I believe that's in draft form at this point. And then, uh, to Anna's point, um, we, we really should get a voice from the professional community, from, uh, mortgage companies that have interest in homes in our community, to realtors that are, um, not only showing Sartell homes but are showing other homes. And I think, as we think back to our, uh, CIP and our annual budgets, we planned for five percent. And, uh, this year was a little bit of a wake-up call when it was about half of that. And so, we need to be dialed in a lot further, and the only way to do that is, uh, get better data and intel, so. That's my spiel on the need for that committee. I'd make a recommendation, or, uh, I, I guess I'd make a motion that myself and Councilmember Lynch continue to plow through on that topic? Pat, you have a continued desire?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to stand up an ad hoc committee for property evaluation discussions that would consist of, uh, myself and Councilmember Lynch?
A second?
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we have that committee formed. Uh, next, onto departmental incident or reports, we have administrator.
Mayor, members of the council, you received my reports, um, September twenty-sixth, October third, and October tenth. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for city administrator? Seeing none, thank you, uh, Public Works Engineering.
Uh, evening, mayor, and members of the council, you have the Public Works and Engineering report, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Public Works and, and Engineering? I'll just say thank you, uh, for, uh, helping walk our community through the questions and some of the topics tonight, so, from an engineering side. Uh, public safety.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my monthly report, as you saw, it was a bit of a very busy month with the events last week in Nyron, but, um, send for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for public safety? Seeing none, thank you. Engagement and experiences.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report in front of you, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for engagement and experiences? I'll offer you gratitude and thanks as well, uh, we had our state of the city today and, uh, I think we went on at noon and up until eleven o'clock, we were still making, uh, adjustments to slides, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to help, you did a great job, and thanks for everyone who attended.
Uh, that concludes, uh, Tim, we'll go for council announcements.
Nothing tonight?
Pat? Rusty?
Nothing tonight?
I have one item. Happy birthday? So, Kerry's celebrating twenty-one? So, uh, we also, at the end of the state of the city, uh, joint, um, meeting today, we, Nikki was, uh, polite enough to offer, uh, happy birthday. We did not sing, but it was a good time. We did not sing, but it was a good time.
Oh, I thought you were gonna do it now.
I would, but the microphone's not working. I have to have a microphone.
I don't think we want that recorded, so. I will look for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.